All right, this will be a meeting of the Town and Hennessy Board of Trustees, regular meeting, July 28, 2022. Roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
All right, item two is report from the Hennessy United Board. Barbara?
No, we have.
I see.
We have the chief of South Fair.
All right.
And the chief of the Wine and Chocolate Festival.
Do you have anything?
Go ahead.
We did the red carpet night, it was a success, and we recognized a lot of people. I mean, that was the latest thing, but we have the upcoming Wine and Chocolate Festival. I don't know how many people do we have, do you think so?
Well, not now, probably zero. I haven't talked to anyone outside of the moment, but it's getting hot, so... I'm not too worried about everybody that participates in the love of this festival. So, they talk about it in the air more than that's going to stay for a bit. It's just a matter of getting a hold of them and getting them out of the city. Hopefully have good weather.
Yeah.
It's a birth Saturday in October.
It is. It's a birth Saturday in October, which would be October, no issue.
At least it'll be a little bit cooler.
I hope it is a little cooler.
Counting on that. All right, item three is consider approval of consent agenda minutes of the May meetings, approval of claims as follows. June purchase orders, 1,004,2651. July purchase orders, 36,12450. July restricted sales tax fund, 2,006,7381. Is that correct?
What?
The July restricted sales tax?
No, it doesn't have like...
Okay. July library fund, July street and alley fund, $53. Except the following reports, treasurer, library board, quarterly reports, budget amendments. B, approved contract with Harlach and Associates to complete fiscal year 2122 audit. B, approved financial service contract with Crawford and Associates, who is our accounting firm for the 2223 fiscal year. F, approved signatures on the following paperwork to achieve release of funds, approval from Oklahoma Department of Commerce for CDBG grant number 1852321, anti-displacement plan, leverage match form, 701.5.15 certification, environmental review exempt form, environmental review category excluded subject to form, and drawdown resolution. And item G is sales tax data. Tiffany, I see some new items on here, like our approval with Harlach and Crawford on the consent agenda, so we can just approve all of that into the consent agenda.
Correct. Unless you want to discuss something, then you'll have to bring it down to the scheduled business.
Okay, I would like to bring item G, sales tax data, down to regular scheduled business.
If that's the only time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Certainly. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, citizens' comments. Anybody got anything? Okay, town administrators' report, Tiffany?
So, new employees, we hired Steven Mitchell as the new library director. Steven, he has a great love for the library. He, as a teen, worked in the library as a teen volunteer when he was in high school. He finished up his psychology degree in May from Northwestern. So I think he's going to be a great asset to the library. We are advertising for a children's library in there, so we're looking forward to trying to find a children's library. Today, or tomorrow, is Lindsay's last day. Today, they had a, the Friends of Library and Library Board had a reception for her. And so, but tomorrow will be her last day. I encourage everyone to go by there and express their gratitude to her. She has been great. She stepped into that position with, I mean, she had a bachelor's in library science, but with really no managerial, fresh out of college, and she has rocked it, so... Purchasing, oh, I also hired Hugo Rodriguez as a time laborer in the streets and parks department. He's been doing a lot of lawn maintenance at the cemetery and the parks, so... Purchasing, I forgot to put the fireworks on the agenda last month, so I did the emergency purchase of the fireworks, so... But we spent $7,200, which we budgeted $1,000. The Osborne sewer project, we are approximately, probably around halfway done with it. I have got David Fuchs in his, in the great work crew to come and help us. Once we got into it, it was maybe a little bit above the heads of our employees, and we needed some of that assistance. David Fuchs has great knowledge as far as the grades and different things. And when you're talking about a sewer line, you want to really make sure that it's correctly... The library building committee just wanted to report that we're waiting on the report from the architect. The architect did a walkthrough, I think it was last week, and so now they'll just be waiting for that report. The Aquatics Center, we were closed one day last week. Our acid pump and our chlorine pump both broke. First, we had ordered two acid pumps when it broke, so we thought that that acid pump would fit the chlorine. Well, come to find out, it was the wrong, it would not, so we had to order a chlorine pump, and this was on Friday afternoon. So the guys had to manually put in chlorine for Saturday, Sunday, Monday, until Tuesday, when it came in, so they did a magnificent job. They kept the water at the level that it was supposed to be with the hot temperatures. I was very proud. And David Trainer, he's a godsend for that pool. He made sure that everything was running properly. He informed the lifeguards on how to do everything, so he might have got a little testy with them, but he does really, I mean, I don't know if something, we ever lose David, it's going to be hard to, you know, ever replace him. The R.O. replacement project, they repaired the concrete and the dirt. They fixed the tunnel under there, and they replaced the concrete. We are waiting now on the big control panel. It has not arrived yet. So as soon as it arrives, then they'll begin work again. The water tower out there at the water plant, which has never seen maintenance, they have finished, they should have today finished power, or sandblasting the interior. They've already sandblasted the exterior, and they've started painting, so... And we've had to do a bypass during this time, and all of our nitrates have been testing well. You can test, see the nitrates on our website, so... One thing that I want to make a comment, it's been brought to my attention that somebody is saying that I receive a certain percentage of the grants that the town receives. I want it known that I do not receive anything besides my salary. So there is no, when we hire grant writers, then they do get a percentage. But as far as any employee who writes grants for the city, there is nothing besides their salary that they get, so I just want that to know. I think that is all I have.
I've got a statement, and I will read it. However, I printed it and wish to hand it out. That way, there's no question about what I'm saying, and Jack, I've got one from Lombard as well. Anyone to take it?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Let's put that hand out, though.
Yeah.
You need one, Harold? Okay, as you know, I called for a special meeting of the Hennessy Town Board of Trustees for June 1st, 2022. The library was discussed at length at the regular May meeting. Following that meeting, I received letters, visits, and phone calls regarding the status of the library. I felt that we left some unfinished business on the table concerning the library. Since I had a vacation scheduled and will not be attending the June meeting on June 9th, I therefore thought it was prudent to call a meeting where all five trustees would be present to put concerns over the possibility of closing the library to rest. I also thought it was important to address the library building as well. Much talk has occurred concerning the building, for many what-ifs were discussed. I felt it would be prudent to appoint a committee to study the feasibility of renovation, restoration, remodeling of the building, as well as studying the feasibility of moving the library from a new building in a different location. I called four people prior to the meeting to ask them to serve on the committee. The only person I wanted to appoint whom I didn't call was trustee Richard Seminek. The only reason I didn't call him was because I'd already asked another trustee to serve, and it's illegal for a trustee to discuss a town issue with more than one other board member. I knew the building was something that trustee Seminek had strong feelings about, therefore I assumed he would agree to serve on the committee. Since I could not legally inform trustee Seminek on the nature of the meeting, he apparently speculated on what would be discussed. He wrote approximately 23 posts on All About Hennessy's Facebook page, and I want to address some of those tonight. In one post, he said, "I received a telephone call from Tiffany this morning that Bert is not intending to tear down the library, but merely discuss the issue." In all capital letters, "That is a lie," and that was a quote. Later, in the same post, trustee Seminek stated, "This is not the first time I've been lied to by Bert and Tiffany." When I saw this, I was troubled that Mr. Seminek had made unsubstantiated claims that both myself and a town employee had lied. I called two attorneys to discuss this matter on behalf of the town as I felt that Mr. Seminek's comments put the town in a liable, liable situation. The first call I made was to Matt Love with O-MAG, the town's insurance provider. The second was to John Wynn, Hennessy Town Attorney. Both attorneys advised that the town's liability insurance would cover trustees individually, but only if they were acting in good faith in a manner of the board. Both attorneys stated that any statement or action made by an individual member of the town board was a statement or action of their own and does not represent the town of Hennessy or the trustees. Both attorneys had strong words of caution concerning any trustee acting on their own as no liability coverage would be provided for that trustee, and the town's general liability policy may not defend the individual board members in the event of lawsuit. It was recommended that I inform the other trustees of lack of coverage for their individual actions, and that's what I am doing here tonight. Mr. Wynn also stated, "If statements such as these continue, O-MAG could refuse to insure the town for general liability coverage." He further stated that he did not know of a private carrier who would insure the town of Hennessy. Mr. Love stated that if individuals make statements that a censure of a trustee may come necessary. In addition to the issue of liability, I want to address some other concerns which were imposed during this same timeframe. One of the posts stated, and I quote, "While the country is celebrating and honoring our veterans, Hennessy has taken the war memorial to gold and star and silver star Hennessy boys to the town die." I do not know why this statement was made, but it angered many veterans in our community. No one with any connection to the town of Hennessy ever made such an insinuation, much less a statement of such. My own father's name is on that display with a silver star. I take considerable pride in that memorial, as do many others, and it's absurd that this statement was posted.
Do you want to respond, Bert?
If you would like to, go right ahead.
Okay. In the town council meeting, it was brought up that the library would be moved to the Hennessy School. It was also mentioned that the library would be moved, we bought the town building next door, we drew the library in there.
Your wording should say possibly moved, not that it would be moved.
Okay. Hen?
We can't hear.
And shortly after I had moved to Hennessy, I went into the library to talk to Mr., Mrs., to Mary Haiti. She said that Tiffany was just there and had left, and that some council was going to tear down the old building. So that's where I'm coming from, Bert.
That's hearsay, Richard. Nobody made those comments. And I would suggest, before you call one of our town employees a liar in public, that you do a little more research.
I trust Mary Haiti to give me accurate affirmation.
Okay, okay. Well, I am just, and by the way, this letter was approved by the town attorney today, before I read it, as to form and fact, and I just want to make the trustees aware.
And I want to make one other point.
Okay.
You've had that building since 1983. What have you done in terms of grants for, to preserve that building, to modernize it?
We have air-conditioned the auditorium, we put complete new heating and air.
Have you applied for any grants?
Yes.
Yes.
What are they?
One of them was a REIT grant.
Was it for the handicapped entrance?
Handicap entrances and the whole remodel of the bathroom.
The restrooms were, all, the entire building was made ADA compliant.
It's hard for me to believe that the town is doing everything it can to support that building.
Richard, that's why I appointed a committee, and that's why I graciously put you on that committee, even after you had been bashing me personally. Even your shirt tonight is bashing me, because I said it's not my job to write grants, and I stick by that. It's not my job. And I've got the King Fisher paper here, where you said we hadn't gotten grants. Then you turn around and pray Tiffany for getting $700,000 worth of grants. It isn't my job. We hired grant people. We've got one here tonight. We use Tiffany.
She's very good. She's very good.
This is not an agenda item.
I'll respond to your letter.
Pass it. Keep proving yourself. You should respond to the letter, but this is not, this has nothing to do with that letter.
Yes, it does.
No, it doesn't?
Yes.
Okay. Trustees, would you please look at this, and we will vote on whether or not this can be heard. Richard, I'm tired of you hijacking these meetings, and I'm just not going to tolerate it anymore. I'm the mayor, and I'm in control of what goes on in the meetings. Other than that, I have equal power, and that's how I see it.
I would like to, yeah, I'm trying to speak, I'd like to have my opportunity.
You can't down in council member reports.
Pardon?
You can down in council member reports.
Okay, I'll respond down there.
Okay, before we start other scheduled business, uh... Anything, Rick? Okay, no. Before we start other scheduled business, I want to also state that we will allow 10 minutes per agenda item. We'll allow three minutes from responses from the public. I would like to see us get a podium in here for people in the public to respond, so that could approach the podium. So other scheduled business is discuss, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the volley. IMA is discussion and action to adopt the fair housing resolution for CDBG grant number 18523-21.
Do you need me to say anything on that?
Go ahead, yes, if you would.
So, hi, Jennifer, your grant administrator with NODA. On this grant that we have for our shore and water drainage, we're continuing another area of town, because the grant comes from HUD, which supports fair housing, and we have to adopt a fair housing resolution. And so this is our, we have to have a fair housing activity each year the grant is open. So this is just phase one. Next year, we'll do something else. So it's just a standard, a resolution that says that you will support fair housing and not let any new builders or landlords or any renters discriminate against anybody.
Okay. You got the last?
Yes. I make a motion to accept the CDBG grant number 1852-12.
Certainly. Roll call?
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes. At this time, I'm going to call a short recess, because Jennifer needs to get to the town council.
Yes, we have some signatures.
And so I have to sign some documents. We will try to be quick, but you all are welcome to move around, go get a drink, a pizza in there, whatever you'd like. Communicating?
Yes, go, go for it.
We will reconvene into regular session, or back into our regular meeting. Item B is discussion with possible action on the town trustee handbook. I asked for that to be on there. I presented that at the May meeting, and like I stated earlier, I was gone for the June meeting. This is going to take some time to go through. I would like to call a special meeting to do nothing but the town trustee handbook. Has anybody got any thoughts or objections?
I would like to...
But what, what timeframes does everybody have available for that?
I'm flexible.
I'm looking at my calendar. I'm not texting. You all want to do Thursday night? Does that work? You want to go, we could either go next Thursday, the 21st, or two weeks, 28th. We'll do the 28th. Let's do July 28th at 6:00.
That's a lazy card party night, but...
Bart?
I'm the same, I'm the same.
You weren't going to win anyway.
I know. Yes, I am. I'm missing tonight.
A 6?
Yes.
A 6. I had asked for item G and the consent agendas to be brought down for discussion, the sales tax data. We've got our quarterly report. I don't know what the sales tax data is on the consent agenda for.
Well, to me, it was just something that you guys did, so I put it on the consent agenda. Richard asked for it to be on there, so that's why I put it on the consent agenda.
I would like to drop it down to the item E, the $100,000 budget shortfall. Discuss it there.
Can I tell you something about your, if you'll pull up this King Fisher Times and Press, I was going to wait till we got down there, but you mentioned that. We received this, I received this letter this afternoon. This is the King Fisher Times. They have objected to items E, F, G, and H. They said that they failed to meet the required threshold of clarity, and specifically of what action may be contemplated. Therefore, formal action taken in regards to those items would be invalid under the terms of the Open Meetings Act. So I've talked to the attorney, and he says that we need to take items E, F, G, and H, strike them from today's agenda, and put them on a future agenda with more specifics on what is going on with those agenda items.
That's fine with me.
With, Richard, like I asked if you would have come in and talked to me, I could have made sure that those met the Open Meetings Act. So I just encourage all of you, when you want something on the agenda, come talk to me, because if I don't know what they're about, I put exactly what you email me, because if I don't know what they're about.
Okay?
We'll reschedule for the next time.
All right. So since sales tax data won't be put in that, have you got something on that?
We're, I was going to discuss it with the $100,000 budget shortfall, so I think I'd like to just postpone that to the, to that, to the next town council meeting.
Okay.
If that works for me.
Okay. Item C is discussion with possible action on pavilions purchased in July 2017. Harold?
July 2017, we bought, the town of Hennessy bought two pavilions, a 70 by 70, a 50 by 100. The cost of them was $20,000, correct? Anyway, I think it's time that we start and make plans to do something with them buildings, by putting over there our lots over at the lumberyard. So, you know, the first thing we need to do, we need to get the engineering steady on them, make sure they're good to put up. So I want to make a motion to start the process of putting the pavilions up.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call?
Could I have a question or discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Where are we going to erect?
Over there at the, on the Roy Johnson lumberyard.
We can discuss now, correct?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Over on the Roy Johnson lumberyard.
Jack, would you like to make some comments?
Well, that's what I called you about the other day, but you were busy. I was going to fill you in on what the plan was, but I think you were, you couldn't get a meeting. Without going into an enormous amount of detail, Harold and I have been working on a plan to erect the, erect those buildings, if they pass engineering muster, and do it properly, and at least get a base structure up like we discussed before, and something that's significant enough that we can now say, we got it up. Would you like to sponsor the restrooms, or a kitchen, or, you know, additional items, things like that? And I think the plan that we've been developing, there's parts of the plan we can't talk about yet because they're not complete. But I think, based on the conversation that we've had and how this is kind of coming together, I think it will easily fit into your goal, your vision of what you envisioned that area to be. So that's kind of it for now.
Did you get to a point of a schematic?
Yes.
Do you have it tonight?
I don't have, I didn't have it tonight. Now, I didn't know how far we were going with this tonight. I was, I was hoping to wait till we got a complete plan.
But that's where you, that's where you told me.
So what Harold's asking for is nothing more than to get an engineer involved in the buildings to test them, to be certain that they're, they're good to go, you know, and if they're not, well, we start over.
They're huge, so I think it...
They're structurally sound, I think they're structurally sound, but we need an engineer stamp on it to validate that they're good and to... stamp on it to validate that they're good and to clear the town from any liability or anything like that.
And do you have a complete layout for both parcels of land?
We haven't got that far. We truly haven't gotten that far yet.
Until we get an engineer's approval on the, on the framework of the pavilions, we need to get that first and then we can proceed with, if we find out that they're good to go, then we can proceed with drawings, with those particular structures and then.
Harold, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you, I might be out of turn here, but as far as your engineering report, is that money-wise, Tiffany approved that, or do you need to add that to your motion to pay for that, or you're?
As long as it comes under, as long as it comes under a certain amount, Tiffany approved.
Do you not know how much that's going to be?
Not yet.
I would assume, Tim, that that will be what they're.
Because just like a lot of the plan, we talk about a lot of plans, but until you get it certified by ordinance, you know, we got to.
I just thought if you knew how much it was cost, they'd add to your motions, you don't have to wait another.
You know, I've talked to Tiffany about it, you know, she wants the board to be aware of all the costs, so.
So what's your line? So what's your line?
Um, non-emergency is $5,000.
I mean, you think they just come down here and measure the thing?
Well, yeah, I know, right. No, I'm right, yeah.
You got to count preparation, though.
I was just trying to save me another step.
Yeah. Trying to make it right.
Sure.
I mean, I thought I could get it put up overnight, nobody.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second on the floor, correct? Roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
That's fine.
Okay. Item D is discussion with possible action to approve quote from Daniel Construction to fix the sidewalks on Main Street.
Um, we've had several sidewalks, well, three of them in particular, that have buckled.
Badly.
Yes.
Very badly.
And so I got ahold of the state and they said, they're ours. So they will not, because they came in and put those sidewalks in, I thought maybe they would come and repair them. And they said, no, that's, that's on us.
You did hold a bomb on that.
But there is a shovel-ready front table.
So I went ahead and got some quotes, or quotes from Daniel Construction to fix the three that have buckled and now, I mean, can't, I mean, it's causing a hazard, a liability for the town, so I figured that we needed to get going on that.
Make a motion to approve the quote from Daniel Construction to fix the sidewalk on Main Street. I second that, but I want to ask a question also. When we did the mercatall side of the street, we took those bricks out and cemented that in, and we said at another time, we was going to take the bricks out of the other side and do that. Is this the time to do that, this time?
Well.
It's going to be right there at the corner. It will be less expensive to have them come back and do it again.
I don't know whether it would be less expense, because we're using a local contractor, I don't know. But you pretty much have to double this.
Because that, that bricks is really, really bad.
I agree with you. And there's a couple of other places I want to fix too, but these were like very bad.
Can I ask a question? What's the, how much was the colo?
Oh, you want to see it?
$12,150.
All right.
Each, each corner was like $49.50, $42.50, and $29.50, of a total of $12,150.
I mean, we can add that, but there's a few more places too, and a few more side streets that are bad.
Are we taking this out of the street fund?
That doesn't have any budget in it. Oh. Oh.
I just wanted to see what our.
It's right there. Well, we're having to, out of the street, we're having to pay for the, our part of the CDVG revenues too.
Okay. Or we can get the other place that you want, what Chris talked about, and maybe have, have another quote. Yeah.
Okay. I would like to do that.
Get her to, to get the other place, so she's got mine to give Betty to look at.
So I guess I take away my second. Strike one. But I would like to really go ahead and get that, at least those bricks taken care of there, because that's, I think it's a real hazard. But this is also hazard, so we really need to be stepped up on this. I mean, we can't like drag our feet, we need to get this taken care of.
What I was saying is.
To do these, go ahead with these.
Right, go ahead and do these.
So that's what you seconded.
Right, this is, right.
Are you retracting that?
No, I'm not retracting my second. I want, I want, I am seconding this, but I also, we have more to do.
That's right.
But we need to get this taken care of now.
At our August meeting, you have that quote for us.
Yes, I, yes, correct.
That'd be great. Roll call, please.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Okay, so we have stricken items E, F, G, and H. Is there any new business? Citizens comments, does anybody have anything you'd like to say?
I do. On the whole deal that you said about relying and stuff, I mean, do you have any proof they're lying? I mean, because you lied, saying that they were going to throw it all away, but yet you never apologized, especially to the veterans, that you were lying and making stuff up.
What is the specific statement?
That they took it to the dump? That they were selling it?
In the previous, when Harold brought this up in a town council meeting, I asked, it focused on the library, library at the high school, library next door and all of that. Do we have a library or don't we have a library? I asked in that meeting three times, what about the museum? What are you going to do about the museum?
And?
Never got an answer.
So that means you're going to take it to the dump?
If you're going to tear down that building, yeah. What are you going to do with it?
Boy, that's, that's a big allegation. I mean, it's not my job to tell you what you're going to do with it, that's your job. And for you to come up and say that you're going to throw it away. But no, no, I'm talking here.
Okay.
When you come up and tell us that while we're celebrating 4th of July and everything, that you're going to take this stuff and throw it away to the dump, and you have no proof, you don't even know if they're going to tear the building down yet or not, but yet you want to sell this stuff and say we're going to sell it and everything else, but yet you have no proof, no allegations. All you've got is allegations. You got everybody stirred up, riled up over this whole deal, and not once did you ever apologize.
Let me interject here for a minute. My intentions, the, or any time that the library is discussed, that also includes everything in the library building. I call it the library because I don't want to call it the library, the museum, the auditorium, it's the library. But there are artifacts in there that absolutely, over my dead body, would be taken to the town dump or something. That's our heritage on display. And so as far as I'm concerned, anywhere the library was to move, those items would definitely go with the library.
If you have the space.
We wouldn't go anywhere where we didn't have the space.
We had $100,000, we had $100,000 budget shortage. Where are we going to get all this money, Bert?
Have you not seen the economy?
Pardon?
Have you not seen the economy? I mean, hell, my gas bill's tripled. I mean, for a town to have a $100,000 shortfall, I mean.
It's not even a $100, $100 shortfall.
Well, I'm just saying, in this economy, I don't think anyone is going to have a, a budget that is not in a downfall.
I wasn't here for the budget meeting, but I don't think you all approved the budget with a $100,000 shortfall. Am I correct?
Correct.
So this is more allegations he's throwing out there just to cause drama.
Now, when the original budget came out, we were worried about.
But when she went back and did her paperwork and got the budget within the budget, so we were.
She fined him, didn't it?
Cut it.
Cut points, yes. I want to.
I want to read from this. Tennessee utility rate increases due to rising costs, budget woes, not dispatcher cuts to poll talks so far. This is in the Kingfisher Times in print press. You can't hear you. Sorry, we can't hear you. I'm quoting your article in the.
Okay.
But, Richard, this article was from June 16th, 2019. That's not very relevant today.
The one I've got is 2022.
Oh, that's a different one. We hasn't distributed that one.
I thought that. I probably have that one as well.
When was that published?
May 22nd, 2020.
And therefore, in May, we did talk about that I was going to have to go and fine tune because we did the initial presentation of the budget. So therefore, I gave you what all the departments requested. Then, in telling you guys that I was going to have to go in there and cut things and figure things out on how to bring you guys a balanced budget, and that's what I did in June, and that's what you approved.
I agree with everything you said, and everything you did was correct, was correct. But my question is, if we have a $100,000 downturn, how are we going to do all this interior damage, library and build another building or whatever?
Where are you getting the $100,000? Okay, so do you not listen in the meetings and only read the paper?
I listen both. I listen in the meeting and I read the paper both, yes.
I don't read the paper, because, and sorry, Barb. Because they interpret everything the way they see it, unless they're quoted. And I've even been quoted wrong in the past. So to me, you've got to, sorry, that was a long time ago. And so, so my whole thing is, you've got to see everything here or come and talk to us. That's the thing, is you're just reading the paper like it's the gospel.
You just read that one part, too, because you said that you were going to.
Yes. You are, you are only reading certain spots.
That's been a practice that I'm aware of, because I said in that table before, and that, that has been a practice of this body for a while. You have a respective budget of every department and their wishes and their wants, and you're trying to make it work and it, I wouldn't take your job, Tiffany, I don't know how you make it work, but you do. So there's nothing new to come up with an initial, say, hey, we're short X amount of dollars, we're going to do some, some things, just, and I think that's what has happened here, and that you're not reflecting on that.
That's a great point. I appreciate that point.
But as I look around town, you know, on maintenance, for example, at Hennessy Park, that tower out there, which is sort of our Eiffel Tower, Tower of Liberty, it's a marker for the city, it's not being maintained, there's no money in the budget. And if you can't maintain that tower.
It's not just, Richard, I agree with you. I agree. But it's not just the city. There's families out here that are having a rough time, that ain't maintenance and the stuff, they want a maintenance as well. I mean, we got a 40-year inflation high. You work with what you have. When times are good, things are good.
Well.
I want to point out something real quickly.
Let me, let me respond here, I think we're very close to starting. If we work with what we have, we're dead in the tracks. We have to go beyond that. And the way we go beyond that is to with grants and legacy funds.
They would go in and grant. Am I missing something? Any other grant lady here?
Yes.
That helps write grants?
That's what I just recessed.
We just were awarded a three, over a $300,000 grant.
So, well, where's the problem if we've, if they've got a grant lady? I mean, to me, it just seems like you're trying to start drama, instead of going to your fellow council people and actually talking to them, you go to Facebook and spew lies and hide behind a computer instead of just going and talking and keeping the drama out of the town. I mean, why?
I can't respond because my subpoenas are off, are off the agenda.
Well, you said on Facebook that if anyone had a one-on-one conversation with you, to let you know, I'm personally letting you know I want a one-on-one conversation with you. I replied to your post, I even sent you a, what is that called, a PM or whatever, and you never responded. So I am officially letting you know I want a one-on-one, sit down and talk with you, whenever you want.
I can see it right now.
We're not going to do that. We're not on the agenda.
Richard, I wanted, you know, I tried to call you about that library. I'm the one who brought the library up. Nobody poked, prodded me or had. I've been sitting in here for over a year, listening to that library almost every month, all right? What are we going to do with it, you know? Does keep on it, you know, it's a lot for that, what we got down there. I'm the one who said if we have to tear it down, that wasn't Bert, that was me, you know? I'm the one, you know, suggested, you know, maybe moving it to another building. We heard at town Hennessy, Public School is going to build one. We discussed that in our planning board, you know? Nobody poked and prodded me to do nothing. Nobody poked and prodded me to do this pavilion thing. It was all on my own. I'm tired of hearing about it every month at the board meeting, and we can move on to something else. You know, everything, even what you've got here later on, has been discussed in this meeting. Fine tune, comb, and we're fixing to go over again.
Here's my problem. I bought those 11 lots and immediately offered it to the town, but if they do something nice with them, they could have the lots. I thought it was a golden opportunity to get those two parcels.
Here it is, hanging out here. Got to do this to do that.
Just a minute, just a minute, Harold. For four years, I did not, I not, I didn't get a single response.
No one called?
We went on the elements for five. Is that correct?
And when I gave the lots, you said dangle, dangle, dangle. When I gave those lots, I said, if you just keep it in grass, that's good enough, because you can have your events and put up plants. There was no dangle, dangle.
Richard, that's not totally correct.
That is correct.
No, it is not, because, and I'm not the only one in this room that was in that meeting, the stakes kept getting higher and higher to where we started out with a pavilion, and what you ended up requesting, if we were going to get those lots, was a two-story building with a restaurant on top. Am I wrong?
You're right and you're wrong. I was trying to throw out things that you could do with that piece of land to make it very attractive.
I remember it as being a condition to get your 11 lots.
No, it was not a condition.
And from my personal standpoint, I don't really care about those 11 lots. We've got half the block.
I asked a question in that meeting, as, when, when that was presented to me, I was out of town, and that's when the town rushed out and bought those buildings.
What color are they?
I asked what color are they.
They're not a color.
Richard, they're frames. Have you been by Howdy Truck Plaza and seen that frame?
I know what a steel frame is, yeah.
So why would they be a color? We didn't get the.
Well, I didn't know what you bought, I didn't know what.
We told you in that meeting.
Oh, you didn't.
Well, I've got other witnesses in this room that says we did, so.
I'm sure you do.
Can you move on? We can move on. One thing I want to point out.
Bert? Can I have a citizen's comment?
You can.
Well, I'll try to keep it brief. Your problem. And I'm going somewhere with this, Bert, so oblige me.
Okay.
How old are you?
How old am I?
Yep.
I am, I have to tell you.
I think I know, but I'd rather you tell me.
I'm 65.
That's what I was going to say, 65. That's what I was gonna say, 65. You started serving this community when you were in high school, right?
Well...
Sort of.
23.
Okay.
No, wait, I was, I was 23 when I went on the town board, I was about 20 when I joined the fire department.
Okay, so for close to 50 years, you've been serving this community. You've been on the fire department for how long?
In January, it'll be 45 years.
And you've been the fire chief for how long?
12, 1986, told me on my mask.
Prior to that, when we ran our own ambulance service, you were in charge of the ambulance service, and scheduling, maintenance on the ambulances, reports to the state, all of that kind of stuff. And where I'm going with this is, you have served this community extremely well for 50 years, at least. You're not just city council, mayor, you're on the Lions Club, you're active there. I know there's a lot of other things you do. I have sat on this board with you. And like I said, you have served this community extremely well for 50 years with honesty, integrity, and character. And some of the shots you've taken in the last several months are very unfair and very uncalled for. You give up your time, your energy, your resources, all of you guys do. And when all of you guys get 50 years on here, if I'm still alive, I will say the same thing about you. But all I want to say is you've served this town admirably with character, honor, and integrity, and you deserve better.
Bert, I agree. Thank you, I really appreciate it. I really do. That means, that means a lot, because you've sat up here, Wes has sat up here, and this chair gets pretty uncomfortable at times.
It does.
And so I appreciate those words. Thank you. We will go on to council person's reports. David, do you have anything?
No, sir. I do, I had, went to the library today with, and we had a going-away party for Lindsay. And she was very, very helpful for the last four years, it's been about four years, not quite, but she just loved it and she really hated leaving, but, you know, she's just turning a page for a new chapter in her life. I just want to say out loud and thank you, Lindsay, I really appreciate it, and wish her the best can be best.
Exactly. I totally agree with you. Richard, do you have anything?
I got a complaint from a citizen regarding the messiness that some people talk around their property have. And I'll come in, Tiffany. So there's, there's a program, there's a program called Clean It or Lean It that many towns have passed to get people to clean up their property. I want to bring in pictures, I don't want to distribute pictures now because I just don't want to go public with that. But I'm gonna bring that up in the next town council meeting.
Well, I can see what I can do. Shelley is our code enforcer, so I know she gets complaints to her almost daily, and she goes out and addresses them, so if people don't, sometimes if people don't tell us, we're so busy in here, we can't really get out and about, so...
That's a lot, Bert.
Okay.
Mr. George?
Seconded.
Roll call.
Harold?
Yes.
Cliff?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, this, y'all thought we were done, we're not. Turn the page, turn the page. This will be a meeting of Hennessey Utility Authority Board of Trustees, July 14th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Richard?
Here.
Cliff?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
David?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda minutes of the meeting. Item B's approval of, approval of claims as follows, June purchase orders, $28,325.68. July purchase orders, $105,053.45. July meter deposit refunds, $530. Treasurers report, and approved pay application number three from Worth Hydrochem for reverse osmosis equipment replacement, which is part of the, part of the grant and part of the work that's being done on the RO plant. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Second. Roll call.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Citizen's comment. Then we give you guys a lot of opportunity. Other scheduled business, discuss, accept, approve, deny, reject, and/or take action on the phone. A, updated expenses incurred for installation of water and sewer lines and the hospital addition. Richard?
I'd like to know how much it's cost and what the final cost was.
I don't have those with me because I did not know what this, what you were wanting, so I don't have those with me.
Okay, I'll clear on this in a little time.
So that's another thing.
You could probably come in and get it.
If you would come in and see me and talk to me, then I can make sure that I'm prepared.
Okay, item B, estimated total cost for the completed installation of water and sewer lines.
Just get that one, Bert.
Yeah.
I think we have, we did have the estimated cost in the beginning, didn't we?
Yeah, that's what we, I mean, it was $180,000, and we decided to do it ourselves, and the pipe, you guys approved the pipe at $22,000.
$22,325.
Yeah.
We hadn't estimated, if we could do it all ourselves, $20,000. And we hired Dave, we figured it had to come in at 180.
Yeah, we've talked about a lot of those expenses in here.
Okay, new business? Citizen's comment? By the way, I, I appreciate all of you coming. I wish we had more involvement in our town government on a monthly basis. It's great, many times we look out and we look at Barb and Jack, and, not that we don't enjoy looking at Barb and Jack, but, and Angie, Angie comes frequently, but it is nice to see citizens coming, get involved in that.
Angela just said it. Remember that we're better looking than Barb and Jack?
I would like to say something along that same lines, because we're five people up here trying to make the decisions of the town, and then we make mistakes because we aren't perfect. And if we get the feedback from the town, then we can make better informed decisions on the town. So I really appreciate people coming and, and talking and visiting, and, so we can work as a community, not just, you know, one-on-one, per citizen joint or something like that, so, thank you for coming. Council person reports.
No, sir.
Harold?
No.
Cliff?
I'm good.
Richard?
I'm good.
I don't have anything. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Cliff?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.